I want to thank everybody for being here tonight and really thank you for the enthusiasm for the subject this evening. Nobody's enthusiastic about coronavirus itself, but we are we're very glad that so many people are interested and are looking for information. I'm Julia Coats. I'm one of the at-large tribal counselors for the Cherokee Nation. We also have Mary Shaw, my colleague, your other at-large tribal counselor. And we're really, really thrilled and very grateful to the Cherokee Nation that they have lent us some of the people who have the greatest expertise in our nation about what is happening right now. So I want to introduce first of all, Dr. David Gann, who is with our Cherokee Nation Public Health Department. He is the medical director. Seated six feet behind him is Lisa Pivik, who is the Senior Director of Public Health for the Cherokee Nation. And then we also have Mr. Todd Enlow with us this evening, who is our Chief of Staff. And I think that we're all aware that coronavirus is more than a medical and health issue, that there are many related issues, particularly around food and around employment. And so we're really glad to have Mr. Enlow here with us tonight as well to help us with all of that. So at this point, I think, Mary, we had agreed to just turn it over. I think Dr. Gann and Ms. Pivik have something of a presentation for us. And then we will have some questions afterwards, but is that what was that planned, Mary? Mary's still muted, but yes, I think that was the plan.
I'm sorry. My thing, as I said, I may be having technical difficulties. We're having bad weather here, so I hope we make it through this without any difficulties. But I agree, Julia, totally.
For a good purpose, I'm sure we will. Dr. Gann and Ms. Pivik, thank you so much for being with us, and we'll turn it over to you now.
Good evening, good afternoon. I'm Lisa Pivik, Senior Director of Public Health. I'm really happy to be here with you this evening to talk a little bit about the efforts within the Cherokee Nation responding to the COVID-19 pandemic. As I was coming in tonight to get on the call, I heard some great things on the radio. One of the things that I heard on National Public Radio is the quote that "The most important thing in a pandemic is the truth." And we hope tonight that we're able to give you as many facts about what is going on in the Cherokee Nation, what is going on with COVID-19 in the nation as far as we know, talk to you about some of the best practices that we're using here. We believe in science and we believe in evidence-based practices that we implement in public health, and talk to you a little bit about how our teams have come together pretty quickly during the pandemic planning and during this crisis and adjusted, and hoping that we can learn some great lessons from this and be ready for what's coming next. I'll let Dr. Gann say a few words too in the beginning, and I'm not sure which slides he wants to put up first.
Sure. So I'm a physician at Hastings. I'm not from here, but I've been here for 18 years. You can see the background. The New Orleans Saints helmet there. I'm from Louisiana. I'm also an epidemiologist, and we've been working the whole COVID-19 pandemic since it started showing up in China. I will show you a little bit later about the data about what's happening here in Cherokee Nation in Oklahoma. I can answer some other clinical questions about the virus and what it's doing and what to expect in the future.
Wonderful. Exciting. Are you all going to go ahead and do your slide presentation at this time?
Sure. You wanted to do the
Boxiding?
The boxiding.
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, I'm going to share my screen.
This is Lisa again, and one of the things that we want to talk about tonight, after the planning and emergency preparedness and still in that mode, one of the things that we switched quickly to is learning how to deal with an infectious disease outbreak in a pandemic such as we're experiencing. And it's, we typically deal a lot with chronic disease, and this was a quick switch for us. And it takes some just hard, fast, true, old-fashioned public health work. And what we're trying to do as we move to this is to what we call "box in the virus", which is requires testing, requiring isolating those persons that are positive, and doing old-fashioned contact tracing to be able to find the contacts of the positive cases, have them quarantined and watch for symptoms, and continue to do that until we're, and keep the most vulnerable of our populations safe during this time. Even contact tracing, I know you've probably been hearing a lot about that on the news lately. It's been in the last week and a half that we've seen a lot about it, but we've actually been doing it since the very first case came into Cherokee Nation over a month ago, and that's how we begin to start looking at the cases that we have, finding the people connected to that, and helping prevent the spread in our communities as we move through this. And so as you see time go on, you're probably going to hear this again and again from public health experts across the country. CDC, several different places that you'll be looking at are going to be telling you the same things. The way to isolate then is to test, isolate, find the contacts of positive people, quarantine, and continue that cycle until you move out of the pandemic. Dr. Gann, do you have anything to add with that?
The, I think it was really interesting with our Public Health Department, we've always relied on the state for outbreak investigations. I can hear stories about, you know, E. coli spreading somewhere, or Campylo bacteria, other infectious diseases. They've been small localized outbreaks. And we quickly recognized that the state health department here in Oklahoma wouldn't be able to handle this. So we immediately stood up this contact tracing team and turned all our efforts to that. So we went from no acute disease service to a staff of, at times, about 25 people. And we just expand and contract as needed as the work showed up. And I'm really impressed with the work that we've done, working with the people who are sick or who are contacts of the sick people, and how compliant they were with our request to stay home. And I think it's made a big difference over the last six weeks.
I think you'll also hear a lot in the coming weeks about contact tracing, and you're going to see health departments across the nation doing more of this work. And one of the things at Cherokee Nation that we know is extremely important is that we use our own people and people that are recognized in the community, people that know where people live and are friends and family, and that we make sure that we use our own people to do this work, and that we do it safely, and we do it with privacy considerations, and that we do everything possible to make sure that we keep our families safe as we move through this, doing the best work that we can. And I will have to say that I applaud all the efforts of all the councils and our administration for everything that, moving through this crisis. Our leadership has been first and foremost within the state, acting quickly and supporting our Public Health Department as much as possible, and helping us do the work that we know we need to do, because this is a condition that can't just, this can't be fixed in the emergency room, and it can't be fixed in the hospitals right now. This is the most, the best place to be is not to have to get there to begin with. And that's the hope that we have, is that we can prevent more cases from spreading in our rural communities.
Sure. So if it's okay, I'll go over a little bit of the epidemiology, what's happening locally. When the cases first started in the United States, a company reached out to us called Tableau and said, "Tell us what you need, and we'll give it to you for free." And they really just gave us tremendous assets. We trained up four epidemiologists. Three of those weren't even in public health, that we brought over from behavioral health and some other programs, and taught them how to use this program. So I'll show you first this map of Cherokee Nation, the counties. The numbers here are the number of Cherokee Nation Health Services patients who have tested positive. There are other Cherokees and Native Americans who tested positive outside of our system. There's about five or six of those. And the county health departments turned those cases over to us for investigation and contact tracing. You see the numbers are quite low. Outbreak in Adair County that was quickly recognized. And we went to the community there near Stillwell and tested as many people as we could, and were able to get a handle on that. There seems to be possibly a new outbreak in Westville, a little bit to the north. And we're going to be there tomorrow morning with the county health department, testing as many people as we can to figure out the source of that transmission and to get that stopped. If you look at the cases in the general population, so this is all people in the counties, you can see the numbers. There's a long-term care facility near Bartlesville, and something else happened there, but they really went up quickly, the number of cases. Delaware had a long-term care facility that where people became infected, Wagner, and and of course Tulsa's going to have a large number of cases. The, but overall, northeast Oklahoma hasn't done that poorly. If you look at the deaths among patients of the Cherokee Nation, we had three deaths from the outbreak in Adair County. Very tragic, and I think it really helped the county itself to embrace the social distancing and to close down some of their businesses. It took some convincing, but I think that worked. So you can see overall, not bad. And then deaths in the general population, you can see the numbers there. All tragic, but it could have been a lot worse. If you look at this graph, this is, the green line is the cumulative number of cases in Oklahoma, beginning here in around March 16th. Oklahoma had the first case earlier in March, and then we're up at 2,894 as of this morning. The blue line's the number of cases among patients of the Cherokee Nation. Again, there are a few other Cherokees to add to that, five or six. So there's no exponential growth in Cherokee Nation that you might have seen, especially compared to the shape of the curve in Oklahoma as a whole. The other interesting thing, we follow closely, you know, we're standing at the ready for our resources to be overwhelmed, and it's just not happening. But we have all the personal protective equipment we need. We have our services toned down to respond to emergencies. Hospitals prepared, the clinics are prepared, we're doing drive-through testing. But the blue line is the number of emergency room visits per day. And you can see when the first cases started showing up in Oklahoma around here, the number of people going to the emergency room has gone down. Or at the same time, at the bottom is the number of very sick patients who have come to the emergency room that were either admitted to the hospital or were transferred to Tulsa. That is state constant. So we feel that the people who really need to be in the emergency room are still showing up. And the people who are maybe not that ill are taking care of themselves at home. Our fear is that people don't go to the emergency room and they get sicker. Like you've heard the stories of, you know, people with appendicitis or gallbladder issues staying home till they get very sick, but that would show up in our number of admissions and transfers as a large bump, and it's not. So we're normally well over 200 patients a day, and over the last several weeks, we've only had one day over 100. But we don't know 100% sure what that means, but we're keeping a close eye on it. Now, that is also preserving our personal protective equipment and preserving our staff. Or if we do get the surge to our system, we're going to be well-prepared. The Let me show you a screenshot. The Oklahoma State Department of Health has a really good dashboard, and I recommend you go to that. If you look at the square here, this is Oklahoma total, and the red line is a cumulative number of cases per day over time. And you see here, it's 2,894. The purple line is number of people, cumulative number of people who were ever hospitalized over time than the number of deaths. So the hospitalization rate is averaging anywhere between 15 and 20% of all cases, which is about average. But the state's done really well handling that. Overall, in the state, the resources, meaning the number of beds, the number of ICU beds, the number of ventilators have not been maxed out, like maybe 50% so far. And that's because of the social distancing and the efforts that the communities have taken to enact those efforts to prevent the spread of the disease. So we're really lucky there. Of course, as things ease up, everyone is still on alert. The whole state healthcare system is still on alert, under emergency management, like we're here, we are here in Cherokee Nation. So we're not putting everything away and going back to business as usual, not for weeks at least. So if the first sign of things getting bad again, we'll be prepared. We've got lots of different metrics that we're using to figure that out. So that's all the data I really had to share. And again, to dig into Oklahoma, I recommend the website. Just Google Oklahoma State Coronavirus, and that will come up. And that's it. So I can turn it back over to you, Counselor Coats and Shaw.
David, one question, if you would. Show everybody our website too, and where they might be able to find the COVID-19 resources off the main page.
All right. Let me give that a shot. I'll share my screen in a second. So All right, let me share my screen again. So this is the main Cherokee page, and if you scroll down to the coronavirus. And Look there. So here's the coronavirus page. It has a variety of resources within it. Was there something else, Chief Staff, you wanted me to show in particular?
I had a couple of comments. I did. This is Lisa, and I do have a couple of comments when we get back to.
Yeah, I was going to say, on that page, you've got links to the state data as well as the CDC. And then off the actual main landing page, if you go back to just cherokee.org real quick, that page, there in that yellow box, if you scroll down about halfway, you're three-quarters way down through that orange or yellow box, where it talks about the virus. As of April 22nd, Cherokee Nation Health System has 54 confirmed cases. So that gets updated daily, so you know what the total count is throughout our health system.
I just had a couple of comments. As I mentioned earlier, when I was talking, that most important tool we have right now is the truth. And the truth is that we are prepared, but we all don't know what will happen if social distancing is lightened to a point. We have not been through this before, but we are ready to amplify our services, continue contact tracing, continue all the work that we do. So I would not be telling you the truth if I said I wasn't worried that a lightning of social distancing in Oklahoma may show us a bump, as it will in other states. And so I think it's really important for people to still seek out that information. The standards that are being recommended for when to ease up on things have not been met in most places yet. And that's important for us to remember to keep ourselves and our families safe. Just because the local bowling alley opens doesn't mean you should flood down there with your family or restaurants. You need to use that judgment, especially thinking about the older members of your family and those that have underlying conditions. It's really important. I just went through this with a family member for the last three weeks, and it's excruciating to not be able to be there with them. And it's, so it's really important for us as all of us Cherokee citizens to use our best judgment and to keep finding sources where we can find accurate information, science-based information and the facts about what's going on with the virus. You know, I want to thank you all for that amazing report. And I want to say right now, when there's 2,807 cases in Oklahoma and within the jurisdiction of Cherokee Nation's health system, we have 54. I have to applaud whatever efforts you all are doing.
Thank you.
Essentially successful. And really, from the bottom of my heart, wa doh. I mean, that is amazing, and I'm really proud of those statistics. Thank you. I'm going to start with some questions.
So the issue there is like, how much are we testing? You know, we've tested over 1,000 of our citizens. We're, for the most part, sticking to people who are symptomatic. We don't have a shortage of tests. We're going to Westville, like I mentioned, tomorrow with more tests than we're going to be able to use. And, you know, Indian Health Service has been very supportive with getting us the rapid test, Abbott test, and working with our other supplier, SCAL, that does tests there. So it doesn't feel like clinically, right, that there are people that we're not testing because we don't have the tests. But that does change every day. The farther we go, the more quickly we're getting our tests returned, the test results, and the more tests we have available. It's, the numbers aren't low because we're not testing people. So that's good. Back to you, Mary.
Okay, thank you. I have some questions that have been submitted prior to tonight, but I'd like to go over. And the very first one's for our Chief of Staff, Mr. Enlow. Mr. Enlow, given the substantial morbidity and mortality rates exhibited by the Indian nations in the Four Corners region of Colorado, New Mexico, Arizona, and Utah, and the high incidence of underlying medical conditions such as diabetes and hypertension among our citizens, what lengths has the nation gone to be better prepared for this pandemic?
Quite a few things. First off, we wanted to make sure that we took care of our employees, to make sure that they were going to be there and available, especially those in the healthcare environment. So the first group that we asked to go home, to find ways for them to work from home or to actually be placed on administrative leave to social distance themselves as much as possible. We asked those that were over the age of 65, which was about, if I recall, about 400 employees that met that criteria. And the second wave, it was pretty easy to determine that group by just looking at data births in our HR system and quickly identifying those that were over the age of 65. And then secondarily, we tried to discover those with underlying health conditions that maybe aren't as well-known. And so we asked each of our areas to understand with their employees, ask those employees to work with their supervisors to determine which of those employees met those comorbidity or those additional health issues that put them at greater risk. So we sent those employees home to work from home. And then about a week or two later, we actually asked any employee that could to make their way home. And so the complex, the main tribal complex, which usually has about 450 employees in it working every day, has been reduced down to about 10 employees. And it's led to some challenges doing that. As you can imagine, trying to make sure that you keep an organization with 385,000 tribal citizens and 4,000 employees continuing to send out checks to vendors, to execute contracts, to make decisions, to make deliveries, to continue healthcare with limited staff presented some challenges. One of the groups that we worked on and were very concerned about were our elders, especially those first language speakers. And it actually became a little bit of a mantra. We had an employee said, you know, "We've only got about 2,000 first language speakers that are still alive, and the median age of those is 67. And if we lose any of our speakers to this virus, I'm not okay with that." And, you know, it's kind of hard to understand the impact of the virus and how big it is. But when you put it in the terms of understanding that you want to protect those that hold the language as the first language, and it's a group of 2,000, it's a little bit more tangible, and it's a little bit easier to understand. And it gave us a goal to fight towards, to make sure that we protected all of those first language speakers. We took care of our elders as our first priority, to make sure that any decision that we made, any action that we took was trying to make sure that we were going to protect those elders. So we've developed a lot of literature based on the information from the CDC and the World Health Organization. And we also translated a lot of that material into Cherokee syllabary and phonetics for our speakers, so they had that material as well. So it's quite a, some other things that we've done as well, but I felt like I've rambled on long enough on the first question, so if I answered that correctly.
Dr. Gann, I'm going to combine several questions for you. First one, what is the boomerang occurrence of the pandemic this coming autumn? And what is the long-term effect of the virus? And is this similar in any way to malaria, and does malaria medication work?
Okay, so that's a lot. You know, what's going to happen this winter, or if we're going to have a second surge? We're still kind of looking in the crystal ball and figuring that out. I listened to Dr. Anthony Fauci when it comes to that, and Dr. Robert Dil from the CDC. I think there will be. We don't know how big it will be. You know, we were ready to get overrun here in Oklahoma. It didn't happen because our efforts seemed to work. So yes, there will be. You combine it with influenza and the problems that that causes. It's going to be a rough winter, we think. You know, we could have another second surge this summer. We just don't know enough about this virus. It's brand new. And if you think about, you know, starting in December, 100% of the world's population was vulnerable to infection from this virus. And, you know, now it's only 99% that are vulnerable. So we're still, everyone who hasn't caught it and is vulnerable. And we also don't know if you've caught COVID-19 and recovered, we don't know if you're immune. They're still studying that. It will be a many, many months before we know how that affects our immune system, and if it gives us permanent immunity. The long-term effects, there doesn't seem to be. If you think of the people who get very ill and end up on a ventilator, it might have some permanent organ damage and brain damage. That's going to happen. But it seems that most people fully recover if they survive. There doesn't seem to be any long-lasting neurological damage that develops afterwards. You know, we're watching all that closely. Now, COVID virus is very, very different from malaria. Malaria is a parasite, multicellular organism. Virus is not. So the way that chloroquine works in the body is multifaceted. It does a lot of different things within the cells of our immune cells, and prevents some things from happening to kind of calm down the immune system. That's why it works in lupus. But it also will attack the malaria parasite. That's why it works for malaria. The latest information is telling us, and the studies aren't complete, or rather, poor compared to the normal standard of evidence we use to make medical decisions. But evidence now is saying that hydroxychloroquine and azithromycin for people who are ill in the hospital does not work, and some evidence coming out that says it's actually harmful. We just don't know. So we're watching it closely. We've used it a few times at our hospital, and the physicians got together and are convinced that we should not use it now. But again, we're, every day, there's information coming out, and there's a lot of brilliant physicians here at Cherokee Nation that are scouring that information, discussing it, and trying to do what's best for the people. The, I know there's a question about the flu and how this is different from influenza. You know, if you look at the death rate, you know, seasonal influenza that comes to the United States by age versus the coronavirus, the novel coronavirus, you can see that the mortality is much, much higher than the influenza. Also know that, you know, part of that is because most of us have been exposed to the influenza virus, plus we have a vaccine, so you don't get as many people infected. And so we have a little bit of herd immunity for the influenza. We have different strains that come through every year that are studied, and vaccines develop. The, you know, with COVID-19, we're all vulnerable. We're all, can catch it. So that's why it's so difficult to control, and that's why our whole, you know, the whole planet is ramping up and dealing with this, trying to keep it under control. You've seen the effects in We've seen the effects in Italy and in France and in Spain, Iran, and South Korea. Singapore is having a second surge. Japan's having a second surge. So, you know, we're watching what's happening in other countries and trying to be prepared. If you look at how easy it is to get the coronavirus, you hear about the average reproductive number or the R not. And these are the numbers that are discussed here. These data are a little bit old. This is from January. And the novel coronavirus sits here. We're pretty sure it's between 2.3 and 2.5 is the basic reproductive number. So it's about the same as influenza for how easy it is to catch. And all these other diseases, viruses are much easier to catch. They spread much more easily. So you spend some time on the internet and read about the basic reproductive number and what it means. It's kind of a theoretical number. And it's best to use to compare viruses so we can have the correct response to it from a public health perspective. So don't get too caught up in that number. Because, you know, in real life, different people have different lifestyles and might infect more people than others. So the key is, if you're sick, stay home. You know, it really, really makes a difference. And if, and we're at the point now where if you're sick, you can get tested and then we can trace your contacts and try to get them to stay home if they're not sick. And that'll help even more. We're learning some more about people without symptoms and how, if they're contagious or not. We did find a group of asymptomatic people who tested positive in Adir County, and we were able to get them to stay home. We don't know if they're spreading the infection. We don't have that, that kind of numbers, but that's coming soon as well. When you think about antibody testing, since this is a new virus, and I mentioned that we don't know if after you, you've become infected, if you become immune after you recover. So what the antibody tests really do is tell us if we've been exposed. But as a physician or as a patient, I don't know what that means. We don't know what that means. Says, "Oh, you're fine to go back to work. You don't need to wear a mask. You're not going to get infected and you won't infect anyone else." We don't know that. And if people are immune, how long does that immunity last? And then with the vaccines, you know, vaccines can be very dangerous if they're not tested appropriately. Those of you that are around in the 70s with the swine flu, the President, President Ford pushed out the vaccine more quickly than it should have been. And the vaccine ended up killing more people than the swine flu did. So vaccines are very tricky to get just the sweet spot where it causes enough of an immune response to cause an immunity, but it's not so strong of an immune response that it hurts people and then other side effects. So we have to know that's safe and we have to know that it works and you can't rush it. And then once the vaccine is developed, it has to be mass-produced for the whole planet, billions of doses. And if it requires two doses, then you have to double that number and get it out to everyone. So that's, you know, the last chapter of our public health response plan is massive immunizations and how we're going to do that, the number of people that we will need and how our system will be able to support that.
Okay. I'm told that we lost Mary. Again, we are having some pretty bad weather in Oklahoma tonight. We really appreciate the Oklahoma folks who are on the, on the meeting this evening. We also have been told that there are quite a few who are trying to get in except for the weather. So are you back, Mary? You're mute. Mary, you need to be unmuted, please.
Okay, it must have done it through all these internet connections. I don't know, but I'm glad I'm back on board now. To our Chief of Staff, Mr. Inlow, there, I'm going to combine about three or four questions here. Is Sequoia going to reopen? And then are there going to be groceries made available? And then what happens to the C and B staff who lost their jobs? And are they being paid? And is the Board of C and B being paid?
Okay. So as far as Sequoia High School, we're following the lead of the state superintendent. When all this virus became apparent and we were looking at closures was when our students were actually on spring break. So it was pretty timely as far as giving us a little bit of time to think and plan and react to that and what that would look like if we were to close down the school system. So as recent as today, Governor Stitt announced that we're going to go into Phase One at the state, opening up some businesses, including like nail salons and hair salon, effective this Friday. And then he's announced plans that he'd like to open up for other things as well. I don't think we'd be able to open up the schools meeting that criteria, even the governor's criteria until really Phase Three and be able to sustain social distancing. So my projection is, just based on where we are at the school system, and we've enacted a lot of distance learning for those students, as well as a lot of other school districts. So I think that Sequoia High School will most likely be closed throughout the remainder of the school year. And we'll have to evaluate next school year when that comes up. And I'm sorry, can you remind me of question number two?
Are groceries available to any of our citizens?
Okay. So first and foremost, we have our food distribution program. That is, we've been operating for 30-plus years and it's funded by the United States Department of Agriculture. We have about 10,000 citizens that qualify or are eligible for those services. And it's income-based. You just have to be a member of a federally recognized tribe to be eligible for those services through a food distribution program operated by a tribal government. And so we've got, like I say, we've got about 10,000 people that are on that service now. So we know that we have a lot of citizens that may have lost employment or had a reduction in hours. And so we're actually encouraging as many people as possible to apply for services through food distribution, even if they haven't been able to use them in the past. They should check now. USDA has made some allocations to allow for those downturns of employment, even for short term. And the nice thing about USDA is it's 100% scalable. And if we sign up 10,000 new participants and recipients of those services, they, they will ship us additional food with no additional cost to us other than any staff that we may have to ramp up to deal with additional workload. In addition to that, we, when we closed down the casinos and suspended the operations, we took their perishable food items and redistributed those to our first language speakers and elders. It was very time-sensitive. We only had a few days to get it out before we lost some of those items. And we were able to affect somewhere around the neighborhood of about 500 to 600 households with those. And it was, it wasn't very robust and it wasn't a lot to sustain somebody for a month. And initially, we had a mantra that we knew we were going to have to deal with. So in a time of emergency, the, the four things that we needed to focus on, on a government standpoint, was the health, which our health team has been managing the healthcare operations. Two is food security. And three is shelter and making sure that sustainable housing is there. And the fourth is those government essential operations that have to be there to make sure that purchasing agents, HR can fulfill physicians and nurses that are needed to go in and work, that, that checks continue to go out, that taxes or payroll taxes are paid and those things like that. And so those are the four areas that we've tried to focus on and make sure that we have things in place to make sure that all of those things continue to operate. Third question is, the C and B Board still being paid?
And the C and B staff?
Yes, okay. So the staff, as recent as this week, through the CARES Act passed by the United States Congress, and there's money set aside for those that may have been displaced. And we've asked our C and B employees, that makes financial sense for them. There's a threshold for that and it's $59,000. So if they make less than $59,000, they are given the option to do a voluntary furlough. And they'll actually receive more income through this CARES Act and unemployment than they would actually typically receive on a normal paycheck. So it's an individual decision that we're leaving up to those employees. But they are being paid through May at this point. And then those that choose to do the voluntary furlough, they're not going to be kicked out the door. They'll have a job waiting on them when we open back up. It's just an opportunity for them to maintain some financial security and actually potentially reach some additional funds until the, until we're able to open back up or the CARES Act expires, which at this point is July 31st, I believe. So the Board is being paid as well, as far as I know. And I think a lot of that is mandated by our legislative act to establishing that Board and what the rate of pay is for those. So we, we need to make sure that we're compliant with the legislative act that was passed by the council. So the Board should be paid as well.
Another question here. Why is the Cherokee Nation Tribal Council not using Zoom like everyone else? There were many questions regarding that.
Well, I was going to say the two council members that we have right here are using Zoom right now. So Zoom is a technology that's been around for a little while and a lot of schools have been using it. And we are using it in a variety of ways throughout the Cherokee Nation. We also have a tool or resource called WebEx. And we employ several different virtual or remote connections for us to conduct business. And so we're actually going to employ WebEx in our next council meeting that's coming up. And there is a legis, there's an act in place that establishes a quorum and what a quorum is defined by hand. Based on prior interpretation, that quorum has to be established by at this presence of at least 12 of the council members to conduct business. And so at this point, I believe the plan is, is that five of our council members will attend virtually and we will do social distancing in the council meeting space at the next meeting and maintain that quorum to establish presence. So we are using it on a limited scale, just based on the current Cherokee laws.
And the first question there is, do you know how the first person in the nation contracted COVID-19?
You know, we don't know exactly. We did investigate, there were two cases that occurred about simultaneously and there were some connections between them and connections to a basketball game and some travel out of state. This is very early on, so we really don't know. So, yeah, we'd just be, just be guessing. And it, you know, for an outbreak like this, where it came from isn't as important as getting them isolated and preventing the spread. Because it was maybe a week after that, it was quickly recognized that in Oklahoma, we had community spread. So which means you can't find the contact. Caught it just outdoing normal business out in the community.
Mary, you're still muted, so you need to unmute yourself, please.
I'm sorry, it's technical difficulty flashing on my screen and this web, it's not helping here. Dr. Gann, can you tell us what the symptoms are and how they differ between the flu versus the COVID virus? And also, what is our testing capacity within the nation at each clinic? If you have any idea, how, what is that capacity?
So the symptoms are very similar. What's different is kind of how the symptoms start and how long they last. So typically with influenza, there's an incubation period of three to four days, which is similar to the coronavirus. What we see with the flu is illness typically lasts five to seven days. There's fever, aches, and pains. There can be respiratory symptoms and then 99% of people recover. With coronavirus, often the onset is very slow, that there'll be a dry cough. There might be some aches and pains, a whole variety of symptoms that people are coming with. Some with just a headache and of course, some with no symptoms at all. What's really difficult with this virus is that, that the evidence we have now says that the maximum viral shedding occurs at the onset of symptoms. So if the onset of symptoms are very mild and the people are the most contagious at that point, that makes the virus very easy to spread. I think what we've seen here is a lot of people with coughs, very common for us to see fever, abdominal pain, but it's fever and the dry cough, I think, are the most common. And again, some, some just have very mild symptoms. We test a lot of household members of people who have tested positive. We've got couples, you know, in their 70s where one person has admitted to the hospital and the other spouse has zero symptoms. And so it's, you know, some little bit of research about why some people get sick and others don't. And it's something genetic, something built in. It's not because they're immune. They still are infected with the virus, but something about their body just doesn't cause the symptoms. The other, the average amount of time that someone with coronavirus is sick is 20 days. The minimum is usually 14 days. So if you're sick and you have a fever and aches and pains, that's going to last a while. We think that after three to four days of no symptoms, that the person is no longer infectious. But, you know, those data aren't completely clear. Some, most of that data is out of China. And it's not in some extensive numbers. So we're still testing that. There have been some early reports of people recovering from the virus and then testing negative and testing positive again. And again, that was out of China and some more research has shown that, that probably isn't true, that they were doing different types of tests on the people who tested negative and some more accurate tests later that showed that they were positive. So the thought was that they were never negative to begin with. As we recover from our healthcare system being overwhelmed here in the United States, we'll have some more data. There are hundreds and hundreds of scientists around the globe that are studying this because we have to know. So that's kind of the, the main differences between the flu and the coronavirus.
Very good. Dr. Gann, what is our testing capacity?
Thank you. So all of our, our clinics in the hospital can test people. I think our testing capacity is, is best reflected by the criteria we use to test someone. So now we will test anyone who has a symptom, a dry cough, fever, sore throat. And we're generally not testing asymptomatic people. There are times where we will test household members who might be particularly vulnerable to the disease. We have tests where we need them. And the, you know, we, we trying to predict the future. We don't know how many we're going to need next week and the supply isn't regular. So we, every day, we have a short meeting to decide what are our testing criteria today. So the lab director tells us how many test kits we have. The supply person tells us what the suppliers are telling us about, what we can expect in the next week. Indian Health Service against us, suppliers with tests. We have Oklahoma We have Oklahoma State University online for testing and several reference labs. So clinically, we have what we need to take care of the people. Epidemiologically, we'd love to have more tests. We can get out in the community like we're doing in Westville tomorrow to test a lot more people. There are people who are homesick, but for good reasons, don't want to go to the emergency room and don't want to go to the doctor. And so there might be more people with the virus. But if they're staying home and quarantining themselves, then it'll still stop the spread. So I don't feel like there's a shortage of tests now and we're getting our test results usually within three days now. And at the beginning of this, sometimes it was seven to ten days before you got test results. So that seems to be getting better.
Very good. Doctor Gan, have we peaked and when do we expect the second wave?
So I, we think we've peaked. And we have several epidemiologists here at Cherokee Nation have been running the mathematical models to tell us. According to our current model, we're gonna not gonna peak until May fifth, but that peak's not gonna be much higher than where we are now. The, in Oklahoma, the models say that we've peaked. Today, as a matter of fact, the latest model said that. The, but now we're changing things, right? We're going to relax some of the restrictions. The weather is also changing, people's attitudes are changing. And so if we have a second wave, don't know when it's gonna be. It really, because we don't know a whole lot about the virus and how it's gonna react to the change in the weather. And we don't know how the general public's going to react. If the restaurant opens up, are people gonna go without their masks and say, well, if the restaurant's open, I don't really need to wear my mask? Or I'm not gonna wear a mask at the bowling alley, that's silly. I noticed, you know, last week, going to the grocery store, I have my mask on and the percentage of people wearing masks at the grocery store dramatically dropped. And so as an epidemiologist, I'm checking the numbers every day to see if that's showing up in our numbers. And I was also expecting a bump after Easter. And that's shown up a little bit statewide, but it hasn't really locally. A lot of people went to church for for good reason. But the, we haven't seen that bump either. So if second peak comes, it could be anytime. And I think at the latest, it'll be this winter, when the when the influenza comes around.
Thank you. To our Chief of Staff, Mr. Inlow, are we experiencing a shortage of PPE? And do we have enough tests and are they at each clinic?
So I'm gonna deal with the the last part of that question first, because Dr. Gan actually covered some of that already. You know, I I share the same sentiment as Dr. Gan. Would I like to have more tests? Absolutely. I I'd like to test any citizen, any patient in the healthcare system that felt like they wanted the test. I'd love to be able to do that. But the fact is, we just don't have enough tests in the state, in the United States, to be able to do that. So as as Dr. Gan indicated, we've got enough tests to take care of those. We're not turning people away because they presented symptoms and we don't have tests for them to take. So we're okay. Where I wouldn't say we're awesome or spectacular or great, but we're okay as far as tests. As far as the PPE, I I feel like we're doing great in that. We've got plenty on hand for our staff. We thought very early to make sure that we had plenty of that material for our employees in in the healthcare system. As well as those that continue to work in ICW and food distribution and other services. Making sure that they're protected as well. And in fact, we've had enough that we are sending limited supplies out to some of our first responders throughout the fourteen counties. Because a lot of times, those real fire departments are gonna be the ones that go into the house and respond to maybe to a Cherokee citizen that's in distress. Or a house that's on fire and they need protection, both for themselves as well as the the community members that they're going out to protect. So today, we started sending out some limited supplies to help those resources to make sure that they're taken care of as well. So, you know, PPE is still gonna be an issue rolling forward, I think, for the long term. But I feel like we've built up enough inventory that if we do see a massive surge, we're able to take care of our employees. Make sure our patients are taken care of when they enter waiting room or any of our facilities as well.
Thank you for that. Doctor Gan, can you tell me anything about antibiotic tests or plasma donations? Are we using these?
And I mentioned a little bit about the antibodies and what the test is good for now. And now it's really not good for anything, because we don't know what the test result means. We have used convalescent plasma at Hastings Hospital. We on one patient and we had to get special permission from the FDA, but it happened very quickly. We haven't recruited people to donate plasma from our citizenry yet. Because just this week, we're getting to the point where two or three people are eligible. But there is availability in the state for people to donate the plasma. We're discussing becoming a special site, working with the Cleveland Clinic, Mayo Clinic, where we don't need to go through the FDA. So it's definitely on our radar and we have used it. The studies haven't quite come out yet about how, when's the best time to use that and what to expect from it. The hard thing about using convalescent plasma to treat severe disease, it takes a lot of it to really make a difference. Using it early in the disease might be easier or using it to prevent the disease can also in different other diseases can be useful as well. So again, it's new virus figuring that out, but yes, we are using it.
Thank you for that. Lisa, can you tell us where the testing locations are that we are doing within Cherokee Nation? And also, can you tell us about any federal support that has been received? And also, can you tell us about Cherokee Nation Health Services' response and how we have managed that response?
Oh, yeah, thank you, counselor. First off, the testing sites are at, our clinics are testing. Some of our clinics have drive-throughs on various days of the week for an hour at a time. As Dr. Gan mentioned earlier, when we see from an epidemiology standpoint where we may need to do further community testing, like we are tomorrow in Westville. We'll set up with either ourselves or we'll do that in conjunction with the county health department, who are our partners for testing. So there's a variety of places to get tests. I think, Dr. Gan, if you have anything to add, that I think for most of the, our healthcare facilities have those. And if they don't, there's a community screenings that are going on either with us or with the county health departments. And from a federal perspective, we work closely with the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And as a public health department, a couple of years ago, we actually applied for emergency funding. Probably, I think, I believe it was the end of, beginning of two thousand eighteen, that we didn't, that just sat there until there was an emergency. And it was good for five years. And it just so happens that this happened during that time and we were able to access some of that to put towards PPE, to put towards lab testing, to put towards staffing surge. And also looking at a couple of other opportunities that have come out from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. And applying for those quickly as we can. We've received a little bit of funding from them to do some more work in the area of lab and testing again and buying supplies to do more community-based testing. We're looking now, and I have calls at the end of this week with our federal partners at CDC to discuss how they might assist us with contact tracing and how they might support our already ongoing efforts that we started over a month ago. And actually asking us to share some of our lessons with them and from a tribal perspective. Because I think we're probably one of the only tribal nations that's actually doing our own work when it comes to contact tracing in our communities. And Mary, I'm sorry, the third part of that question was, oh, our healthcare response. And, you know, I was thinking about this as Dr. Gan was speaking earlier. And and I cannot say enough the, how proud I am of the response of both of our legislative branch and our executive branch and all of our employees. Back at the end of February, we were already ready to stand up to this. Had already put together teams, we were going full team ahead and preparing. And our motto was prepare for the worst and pray and hope for the best, but be prepared for what is to come. And couldn't be more proud. And I also told, we all talked about this, that if we did the response the best that we could and that we did, everybody pulled together, that we might actually be accused of overreacting because we prevent a lot of things from happening. And we're used to that in public health. As Dr. Gan always says, it's like the, nobody applauds the fire inspector or the food inspector necessarily. But they prevent a lot of things from happening that people don't see. So, but as far as the response from our system, I I think that in retrospect, when we go back and we look at these after-action reports, we're gonna see that we did a lot of things in the beginning to really stand up quickly. And that our capacity to work together, no matter what the challenge is, we really demonstrated that as a group of people. I believe that as tribal employees, that those of us, lots of us have been here for many, many years and we wear many hats. And it was just another example of responding to something in the best way that we can from a community perspective and as a community entity and and a tribal nation. And really proud of our healthcare system and our leadership.
Thank you for that, Lisa. I am as well, want to share that. Doctor Gan, can you please share with us, out of the fifty-four cases that have happened within Cherokee Nation jurisdiction and our health system, how many have been hospitalized and do we have enough ventilators?
I don't have the exact number of hospitalizations. I'm speaking with our infectious disease physician, Dr. Merritt, today. And I believe it, it's between seven and ten, so not a, not a lot. We've never had more than one patient on a ventilator. Not all of those required a ventilator. We have eleven ventilators that are designed to work in an intensive care unit and another six for the operating rooms that could be used. And yes, we absolutely have enough ventilators today. And an important part of that as well is that our sicker patients that we send to Tulsa, there's room in Tulsa. So if we would have hospitalized at Hastings, every patient who needed hospitalization, we would have been a lot busier. So as long as Tulsa stays under capacity and, you know, people who are, might have issues with their heart, that we don't have the capability to care for, as well as respiratory problems from COVID nineteen or trauma or some more serious diseases that we've seen. We can still send those to Tulsa, so that we've done really well as far as that goes. But again, the whole system is prepared to respond to being overwhelmed. You know, the very first meeting we had on COVID nineteen, I remember it like it was yesterday, it was February the twenty eighth. Chief of Staff was there and the deputy chief. And the very first thing we did was, our executive medical director says, everyone needs to be retrained on PPE. And we need a count of everything we we have right now. That was weeks before we had our first case. And everyone in our, that sees patients trained and retrained, we went through different scenarios of exposure. We studied on what we should do if someone in our health system is exposed. And it really paid off with the staff being able to deal with the anxiety of taking care of someone with highly infectious disease. I just think about a a pregnant woman having a child when she's infected or if her husband's infected or she has to deliver the baby without anyone else from her family there because they're all infected. We're prepared for all of that, using the guidance from CDC and reaching out to our other resources. Really, really remarkable.
Thank you for that answer. To our Chief of Staff here, Mr. Inlow, we have a question. Is it possible that the Cherokee's at-large website could put information out there for our at-large citizens about resources that may be available to them, the ones that are unemployed or any assistance that might be provided to them during this pandemic?
Yeah, I I was reading some of those in some of the comments earlier. And I I definitely make sure that we try and get some additional information and identify those resources that are available to our at-large citizens. That we haven't, maybe we haven't advertised as well as we should have. So I'll make sure we redouble our efforts to make sure we do that.
That would be so much appreciated. And then I guess probably the final question, Chief of Staff Inlow, had there been any surprises? Anything that you would like to share tonight that has happened during this?
Sure. One thing that I I kind of glossed over was our food efforts. In addition to the reference for food distribution, we've been packaging food that we've been acquiring. And trying to get that into the hands of those that need it. And maybe they couldn't get out of their house, so we've been doing some home deliveries. We've been working a lot with our community organizations and we've packaged up enough food for more than sixteen thousand people in the last four and a half, five weeks. And we're continuing to do that. In fact, we've worked with the USDA again for a program called Disaster Household Distribution. It's nothing that we've ever used before. It's designed to provide food in times when access to a grocery store may be cut off. Well, in this case, is the retail supply chain has been inundated with runs in the grocery stores. So we've been repackaging those this week. We've created another, almost twenty-one hundred boxes in the last two days. That is several weeks apply for a family of one to three. And we're working on trying to get those items out starting next week. So as far as surprises, I'm, they're both good and bad. Good is you get to work with people like Lisa Pivik and Dr. Gan and Dr. Montgomery and Dr. Mira and Dr. Jones and our health team, our emergency management team. And to watch their dedication. We've had conference calls that start at seven o'clock or seven thirty every day since this started. And everybody's diligent. We stay till six thirty-seven and then they continue to take text messages, phone calls and emails well into the night. And so they don't ever stop. And so I'm I'm not, shouldn't be surprised by it, but it warms my heart to know that the people that are taking care of our citizens care very deeply and work around the clock to take care of of every citizen that entrusts their healthcare to us. And so that's the great thing. And to have a chief that took early action on several things, even when it may have been to a financial detriment, when you look at it. He saw the big picture of what it meant for the healthcare of our nation to move forward. And sign executive order and emergency declaration to take care of that. And then, of course, the support from the tribal council to make sure that we get the message out. And that we get the support that we need and the resources that we need to to help make this this work. So those are the good things. The challenging surprises are sometimes we have contractors trying to secure PPE or the personal protective equipment. That, or some of the other resources that we need, provide some challenges and act, being able to get access to those resources. We've had several suppliers call us and say, oh, I've got three million N ninety-five masks and I'll sell them to you at seven dollars a piece. Well, N ninety-five masks should sell for somewhere around the two dollar range, non-pandemic. And so some of those have surprises. And one of the other positive things that has come out of this is I think it's it's made our nation better and smarter. Because we've had to stand up resources and technology that maybe we wouldn't have pushed as hard for had it not been for this pandemic. that maybe we wouldn't have pushed as hard for had it not been for this pandemic. And so there's been a lot of creativity and thought to be quick in action and making sure we're putting forth good resources to take care of our citizens. And sometimes that means we have to execute a contract fairly quickly to get access to some of those resources. And so being able to have that flexibility and get, and to be honest, to get the PPE before others ever started to think about it. We were, we were acquiring PPE at the first of March. And a lot of folks didn't start to think about it until mid-March. And so we were two to three weeks ahead of most people in getting that. So there's both good and bad. And I, I told the chief early on that I think we're gonna be a stronger nation once we come through this. We're gonna take a few hits here and there and some of them are gonna be very painful and we're gonna experience loss. And, you know, I've lost a coworker that's at ten to fifteen feet down the hall from me. And, you know, those are those painful losses. But I, I think our intelligence as a nation and our tenacity to survive is, is what's gonna come out and it's, it's gonna make us stronger for this, for this generation and the next.
Thank you for that very much. I, I would like to thank each one of you for participating tonight and tell you how grateful we are for your expertise and your knowledge, for sharing that with all of us tonight. I would also like to add that on July the fifteenth, that we're going to do an update on COVID-19 within the jurisdiction of Cherokee Nation. I apologize that there were only, it was only room for one hundred guests tonight, but this will be available online and that it will be publicized and available to Cherokee Nation Communications. And we thank you all for being here tonight and wish you all well, yes.
Can, can I interject for just one moment? Actually, I've been looking through the questions on the chat. I think most of them have been responded to this evening. There is one, however, and it might be a nice one to end with this evening. And there was a question about, do we have any, are there any kinds of programs for veterans? That specific COVID-related programs for the veterans in, in our nation?
Specifically, there's not anything. I will tell you that as far as the food service operation that we've been deploying primarily to our first language speakers, I am going to try and get those out to identify our veterans and try to get those resources out to them as well. So our plan is, like I indicated, we've, we've generated about sixteen thousand meals. Or sixteen thousand individuals have been served with these meals, these boxes. The food lasts for about twenty-one days. And so we're gonna try to target our, our veterans specifically for that program in addition to the food bank delivery that they have been doing once a quarter for the last several years. So we'll have that additional resource as well. I, I do know that one of the challenges that has been out there in times of quarantine has been behavioral health services as well. And I know it's one of the things we haven't talked about as, as part of this, but our behavioral health team has also set up a hotline. And so if, if somebody that's experiencing some difficulty during this time, there is a behavioral health hotline. And counselors, I'll see if I can dig that up later on and refresh that to you guys so you can share it with this group as well. And unless Dr. Gann or Lisa has anything else to add to that as well.
I know.
No, it's a pleasure to be with you this evening.
Well, again, I want to thank Ms. Lisa Pivik and Dr. David Gann and our Chief of Staff, Mr. Todd Inlow, for participating with us tonight. And I look forward to your all's return and joining us again on July the fifteenth. And I'd like to end with thanking all our participants tonight and encourage you to practice safe distancing. And remember to be sure and wash your hands those twenty seconds. It's really important. And I want to say wado to everybody. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.